Okay, good evening. Good evening and welcome to this special Public Works Committee meeting. I'm Councilmember Joe Buscagno. We are here at the Mark Ridley Thomas Constituent Service Center in South Los Angeles. It's great to see members of the community here to hear about a very important issue facing the city of Los Angeles. I've called this meeting, and this is one of several meetings that we've taken Public Works Committee on the road throughout the city of Los Angeles. I've called this meeting specifically to discuss our broken streets. Los Angeles has the worst streets in the country. Nearly one-third of the streets are so badly damaged the Bureau of Street Services can no longer maintain them because low-cost routine maintenance is not effective and reconstruction is too costly for a city facing a huge budget deficit. The price tag to fix 8,700 lane miles of failed streets is a staggering $3 billion. Again, this is all the failed streets in the city of Los Angeles from Silmar down to San Pedro. And unfortunately, we're already paying for it. Listen to this. Our cars depreciate in value quicker. We're paying $750 in additional vehicle operating costs every year. Tires wear out faster. We get hit with more repair bills. In fact, I was just on Manchester Boulevard on the way over here and ran over a huge pothole there. And in January, Councilmember Englander and I proposed a bond measure that would finance the reconstruction of all 8,700 lane miles of failed streets in a 10-year period. I've asked officials from Bureau of Street Services to come this evening and give an overview of our problem and answer your questions. The city administrative officer and chief legislative analyst have prepared a preliminary analysis of the bond measure and I invited them here this evening to present their report to each and every one of you. This report and all communication of tonight's meeting on this matter will be available online at lacouncilfile.com under CF number 13-1300-S1. Tonight's information, ladies and gentlemen, will be an informational meeting only. Before giving any instruction to city staff on how to proceed, I want to hear from you, the residents, neighborhood council members, business owners. Everyone's encouraged to weigh in and are invited to partake in the Special Public Works Committee meeting. Following tonight's meeting, I'll hold the final meeting in East Los Angeles on Tuesday, April 30th at 6:00 PM at Aliso Pico Rec Center to allow residents to share their concerns, comments, and recommendations. The city of Los Angeles is no stranger to large infrastructure projects, as I've said in the past. A hundred years ago, the L.A. Aqueduct opened, which allowed a small town to grow into the second-largest city in the country. We have risen to the occasion before and will do it again once more. I want to ask Mr. Clerk to move to our agenda. And what we're going to do is take items one and two together, please. If you can read those two items for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Item number one is a verbal report from the Bureau of Street Services relative to the condition of city streets, street repair and maintenance, and future capital improvements. Item number two is a joint report relative -- from the city administrative officer and the chief legislative analyst relative to the Los Angeles emergency local street safety and traffic improvement measure as initiated by motion from councilmembers Buscagno and Councilmember Englander.
Thank you, Michael. Before we get into our presentations, I'd like to invite our commission, our Public Works Commission President Capri Maddox to give some welcoming remarks. Thank you, Madam President, for your continued commitment and dedication to our city, specifically dealing with public works issues across the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much, Councilman. As you stated, my name is Capri Maddox, President of the Board of Public Works, and it's truly a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for having this meeting in our community. It's really important for us to hear from everyone. You've taken this citywide and we really appreciate your leadership on this matter. It's not an easy problem to handle and honestly, if I had a revenue-generating issue, you'd be the last person in City Hall, probably you and Councilmember Englander. So I just thank you for at least looking into various options to address this problem. We're not here to support it in any way or be opposed to what you're looking into doing, but I do think it's very important for the residents to get the information from our specialists, to know what the problem is. And if they drive on the streets in Los Angeles, they know this is a serious issue. And just thank you for not, you know, putting your head in the sand and, you know, looking to have the problem, you know, resolve itself at a later date. So on behalf of the Public Works family, particularly our very own Valerie Shaw, who serves this community very, very well, I wanted to just thank you so much for being here as you bring up Ron Olive.
Yes, Ron's here. Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Thank you so much. So what we're going to do, we're going to hear presentations again from our Street Services Bureau, as well as the CAO and CLA's office. And members of the public are encouraged to weigh in on this matter, but please be sure you fill out a public comment card you'll find in the back of the room. And upon completion of the two reports, we will open up to the public comment. So with that, representing the Bureau of Street Services is the Assistant Director, Ron Olive. Please, Mr. Olive, come forward and give us a brief overview on the street repair and maintenance and future capital improvement needs. And what I'm going to do, I'll just give you my questions and then you can encompass my questions into your report. For the public, if you can identify and explain what a slurry seal is and how much that costs per mile?
If it's possible, we can turn yourself around and say this.
Absolutely. Also, Mr. Olive, if you can --
Whatever.
In fact, why don't you come up here? Explain resurfacing, what that costs per mile, reconstruction, the cost per mile, and what, explain what reconstruction is, and why does slurry seal and resurfacing no longer work on failed streets today? So ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Mr. Ron Olive, Assistant Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Buscagno, and good evening, everyone. Again, Ron Olive, Assistant Director with the Bureau of Street Services. If I may begin by trying to describe the magnitude of the challenge that we face here in the city of Los Angeles. If you can visualize the size of the city of Los Angeles, 470 square miles. Eight of the largest cities in the United States fit within the boundaries of the city of Los Angeles. Milwaukee, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, St. Louis, Boston, and Manhattan Island. Not only that, but we have the largest street network, municipality street network, in the United States. 6,500, what we call centerline miles of streets. That's an average of four lanes. If you want to think about it as one lane, 28,000 lane miles within the city of Los Angeles. Again, to try to give you a visual picture, 6,500 lane, or centerline miles, is a four-lane highway between the city of Los Angeles and Paris, France. 28,000 lane miles is a lane of traffic entire, around the entire planet Earth and then some. So this is the magnitude of the street network that we are challenged with maintaining every The streets in Los Angeles have chronically been underfunded as far as repair go, really since World War II, all the way through the 1990s. Up until 1986, the city did not fund, only funded enough to repair 50 miles of streets annually. And you, as you know, after World War II, the city was growing by leaps and bounds. And again, it continued until 1986 to only fund 50 miles of street resurfacing. Even through the late 80s and 90s, the city did not fund more than 150 miles of street repair per year. It wasn't until the very late 90s that we finally hit the 200-mile marker. This year, we're actually resurfacing 245 miles, and that's the proposal for next year as well. So these are part of an all-time high with 800 miles of pavement preservation, which includes slurry seal, crack sealing, and some other work that we're doing. Now, how do we manage the funding that we do get and manage the system with the funding that we do get? Up until 1982, the city did not have a pavement management system, if you will. We did not keep a database of pavement conditions, conditions of various streets. It really consisted of the street maintenance superintendent staff driving the streets, kind of thumbs up, kind of looking at which streets needed repair, and that's the way streets were selected. 1982, we finally had a visual inspection program where we kept a database of the conditions of the streets, but again, it was based 100% on visual inspections. And one of the main points I really want to drive home tonight is, in 1998, all the way through now, 1998 is when we first adopted the state-of-the-art pavement management system at the time called MicroPaver. We still have that today. And how we manage our streets today is, actually, every street in the city is analyzed once every three years. We have an automated van that has high-definition video recorders, video cameras, laser measuring devices, and in detail, every street is memorialized again with video cameras and laser devices. Technicians review the information, and all of that detail is stored into the pavement management system. Every street is graded between 1 to 100, given a pavement condition index number. If you think of it as a report card, 100 being a brand-new street, being an A, 0 being a street that's completely gone, being a 0. So every street is rated between 0 and 100. A and B streets are considered in good condition. Low Bs to Cs are fair condition. Ds are really near failed, and Fs are failed streets. And one of the things that Councilmember wanted me to talk about was, with this MicroPaver system, we really do prioritize and manage in the most cost-effective manner how our streets are maintained and rehabilitated. The As and B streets are applied with slurry seal five to seven years after they're first resurfaced, and they're a cost of less than 10% of what it costs to resurface a street. So a lot of times, we're called, there's complaints filed, that we're resurfacing a lot of streets that were in pretty good shape and we left the ones that weren't in worse shape. What you're seeing most of the time is slurry sealing. After five to seven years, you start getting the surface deteriorated. The fine material starts to come out, and that's when it starts becoming susceptible to water infiltration, which will start creating puddles and destroying the street. So at a cost of about $25,000 --
So you're saying that the majority of the street damage is done by water?
Absolutely.
Is caused by water, rather?
Absolutely.
Okay.
When you get water undermining the foundation of the street, the base material, and then you get bus traffic, truck traffic, even normal wear and tear, that's how you, you know, the failure starts. So again, the cost, when we think of the centerline miles, the four-lane highway miles, it's about $25,000 to $30,000 for a centerline mile compared to when you resurface a street, which is a typical grind, two and a half, three inches, and repave, costs about $350,000 a mile. And when the street reaches a D or an F and is failed, now we're looking at $650,000 and up a mile. The good news is, for the past eight years or so, that we've had enough funding in the city to really maintain those As, Bs, and Cs and not let those fall into the Ds and F category, which costs so many more times to rehabilitate. But in doing so, we still have those Ds and Fs, which again, in pavement management, you can't put the limited funding you have into the most expensive rehabilitation work. So unfortunately, the Ds and Fs have kind of fallen by the wayside. We've been concentrating on saving streets, keeping those As, Bs, and Cs in a cost-effective, maintainable condition. But at this point, we're looking at 31% of our street network is estimated to be in a failed or near failed condition. That's 8,700 miles, the lane miles that the Councilmember mentioned, out of the 28,000 total lane miles. If you can think of it, if you have a failed street today, we're only reconstructing about 145 lane miles out of that 8,700 lane miles. You really have a 60-year wait to get your street reconstructed if it's failed today. And that's really, again, what the funding that the city has at this point on an annual basis, we're going to continue to try to save those As, Bs, and Cs. We've got to let the Ds and Fs go, and as the Councilmember mentioned, it's about a $3 billion estimated backlog at this point.
So the money that's dedicated right now is strictly used to maintain the A, B, and C street condition, conditioned streets?
That's correct. Maybe 10% or less is for the Ds and Fs.
What's the price tag on that every fiscal year?
The annual research program we had last year, or this year that we're in now, is roughly $100 million.
Good.
About $10 million for slurry seal and about $80 to $90 million in resurfacing and reconstruction.
Thank you, Mr. Olive, for your report. I'd like to call now, call up representing the CAO's office, David Hirono. Natalie's here, Natalie Brill, Stacy Sosa. I don't know who out of the three we'll present, but if you can make yourselves available, it'd be really helpful. You can also bring up this additional mic if we can. Also, Mr. Paul Smith is here from the Chief Legislative Analyst's office. Thank you very much. If you can come up to, to present, I'd appreciate it.
Natalie, I'll just swing on over.
Thank you. So again, as a reminder, please, if you're here to speak on this, on these two items, please be sure to fill out a public comment card. And after this report here, we'll begin the public comment period of the meeting. So with that, I'll just have the CAO's office, please, present their findings. I know it was a combined report of both the CAO and CLA's office, and I'll just turn it over to the CLA. Then I have a series of questions that I'd like to ask.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. I'm David Hirono from the Office of CAO, and up here at the table, I'm joined by Paul Smith from the CLA's office and Natalie Brill from the CAO's office. And also, somewhere over here, I'm joined by Stacy Sosa of our office. And we'll do the best we can to provide all the information that you need. We want to thank you for showing your leadership on this issue. This is an important issue, and our office agrees wholeheartedly with the makers of the council motion and the mayor that the repair of the city's street system is one of the most critical programs that we have in the city right now and most, and the one with the most, in the most dire need of extra funding. At your request, we went ahead and reviewed the proposal for the $3 billion bond program. And at this point, all we can say is that we believe further analysis is needed to verify that $3 billion is sufficient to achieve the goal of resurfacing the city's road system to an average rating of B. And there's a couple of reasons why. What the $3 billion number represents, as Mr. Olive has just represented, is the amount of money that's projected to be needed to repair the Ds and Fs. And the Ds and Fs are roads that we are, at this point, pretty much just ignoring because of a lack of funding. But we also have two other components of the road program that are very important. What we continually refer to as the pavement preservation system is what Mr. Olive referred to as the city budget that deals with A, B, and Cs. And we fund that on an annual basis in an attempt to not allow the As, Bs, and Cs to deteriorate and add to that inventory of Ds and Fs. One correction to the number that Mr. Olive put out, his bureau gets about $100 million a year for the pavement preservation program. The city itself pays approximately $130 million a year. And we have four different departments involved in the pavement preservation system. It is, Street Services is definitely the lead, and that's where the bulk of the money goes. But Engineering, DOT, and our General Services Department also provide support in that area. And in this particular area of the budget, we are experiencing the same stresses that we see in the rest of the city budget that you're all familiar with, and that is, we have costs that are increasing faster than our revenues. So in a $3 billion bond issuance, we're looking at a potentially a 10-year implementation horizon. Over that 10-year horizon, we would also need to find fundings for the pavement preservation program. And at this point, with the rising costs of labor and materials and our flat revenues, that's going to be quite a challenge over a 10-year period. And that will be a challenge in addition to the $3 billion that we're talking about. And the third component of our road program that requires attention is, we have what we call capital improvement expenditure program on an annual basis. And that capital improvement expenditure program deals with things that we consider emergencies, not that Ds and Fs aren't emergencies, but to give you an example, in some of our hillside areas, some of the roads have water wash off them and undercut the roadway and reduce the lateral support for the roadway. So we actually have to block off the roadways and restrict people's access to their homes because the roadway is in serious danger of collapse. So every year, we fund in the budget in our capital improvement program bulkheads, retaining walls, other major construction that's required just to provide lateral support to whatever that roadway is, whether it's an A, B, C, D, or F. In addition, we also have some special projects that come up every year that we require funding. The normal amount that we set aside for our capital program varies from $3 to $17 million a year, on average, maybe $6 to $8 million. But then we have the special projects, for example, the White Point landslide in San Pedro that took out Paseo Del Mar. It's going to cost us significantly more than what would a normal road construction would cost. We have another landslide in CD 11 that's threatening to take out a Silmar Boulevard, which is, actually, has homes perched right on top of it and a trailer park perched right below it. So, you know, there are critical infrastructure projects that we have to take care of as well because obviously, if a road falls down the hillside, it's no longer a D, it's clearly an F. And it's now going to cost us many millions more than what Ron indicated resurfacing and reconstruction would cost. So as we move forward over this 10-year horizon, if we are able to secure funding through this bond program, we would have to find sufficient funding for all three programs. And that's going to be a significant challenge for us as well. So the other component that I wanted to point out for you is, in our evaluation of the proposal, I kind of wanted to give you a sense of what that would mean to the typical property owner. The typical property owner, if they were the owner of a $350,000 home, would pay approximately $121 more in property taxes per year over a 29-year period, and that works out to about $0.33 a day. So, you know, it sounds like it's, we're coming after the property owners with this proposal in a serious way, but when you look at it, it's less than the cup, cost of a cup of coffee a day. And there is a significant increase in property values once you have an A or B street in your inner neighborhood. And as you've indicated, the cost of maintaining your vehicles, the damage that's being done would be expected to be decreased significantly as well. So.
Okay. If I can, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Smith from the CLA. I'll just add a couple of things that also is in the report that David didn't mention. One of the things that we've been asked to look at is how the, how the streets will be selected. And the city, city streets are considered for reconstruction under the bond program will be objectively selected through the use of the city's MicroPaver system. It's an analytical tool which the Bureau of Street Services uses to gauge the condition of the streets. It's a survey. They go through every three years. They look at it. And not only does it tell you what the condition of the street, it gives you the optimum plan for either a repair or the maintenance of it. So the selection of the streets will be done on a very, almost scientific, scientific Also, we were also asked to look at whether or not this would entail adding city positions. No, it's not. It's really going to create jobs. This will have an opportunity for the private sector to offer training programs for folks who want to get into infrastructure repair programs such as the street bond. We see going forward, there is going to be more money placed into aging bridges, streets, all the other infrastructures, infrastructure programs. So through this, we're not going to burden taxpayer with the city jobs. There will be private sector jobs and the private sector training opportunities. Also, we were asked to look at various options for financing the $3 billion. Our report looked at several different options and concluded that the most viable was the general obligation bond. And this is an example of what our UCLA colleagues called good borrowing. Geo-bonds are backed by the promise to levy an avalorum property tax in an amount necessary to pay the debt service. Because of this pledge, it has to go to the vote of the people, two-thirds vote is necessary. These bonds typically have low borrowing costs because of the broad pledge of the security. They also tend to yield high ratings and have a wide range of acceptance from the investor community. Because of the secure nature of it, it presents less risk to the bondholders. And bond proceeds, the money generated, can only be used for what is specified in the ballot. It couldn't be funded for something else.
So Paul, explain to us some of the projects that we've done across the city that included a bond or a voter-approved bond, or maybe Natalie?
I'll just quickly, over the last 20 years, we've done bonds from, from fire stations, police station, public, public safety stuff, animal services, libraries. We have schools, sewer, sewer systems. Generally, they have a senior staff-level oversight committee, committee that meets on a monthly basis. Some have even have citizen oversight committees that help guide and implement the programs. We have an excellent record on this. We've come, it went to at budget and on time. And in some cases, we've had, had money left over that we can build other facilities, such as fire stations.
Great. Thank you so much for your report. Maybe Natalie, if you can help paint a picture for the public, explain to us what a general obligation bond is.
A general, this is Natalie Brill from the City Administrative Officer. I do debt, as my children say, I've put the city into debt. The general obligation bonds are issued under state law, and they're very specific on what you can use it for. It can only be used for the improvement of infrastructure, for the acquisition and improvement of real property. Well, streets are considered infrastructure. So general obligation bonds, as Paul said, are backed by the ability of the city to put the amount, to split it up between all the homeowners based on your property value and put the amount that you owe on your property tax bill. So when you pay your property tax bill, it comes in through property tax, and that money is used to pay off the debt service.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The amount of debt that would be issued every year would depend on the program. So the program that's been outlined to use $3 billion, $300 million over a 10-year period. So the lowest time that you would pay the debt would be in year one, right? Because you'd only have $300 million outstanding only. And the highest would be at the 10th year, when the full $3 billion is outstanding, and then it goes down from then. So if you own a home and it's worth $350,000, the first year, you would pay $24. The 10th year, which is the highest year, you would pay $209. And by the 29th year, the cost of the general obligation bond would be $12. So over the life of the bonds, the average you would pay is $121. And over the 29 years, you would pay about $3,500 for the streets to be repaired. What is this based on? This is based on the fact that interest rates are very low right now. And you ask, why would I want to issue debt to do streets? Why would I want to issue $3 billion when we have a general fund? Well, the general fund is about $4.5 billion a year, and that comes from, you know, property tax and sales tax and utility tax, business tax. It comes from the money that the city collects. So to repair the streets over a 10-year period with a general fund would be very difficult. The second reason you use general obligation, you use something like general obligation bonds is because the theory is that you're driving today, but in 20 years, somebody else will be driving on the streets. So why should you have to pay for the streets all today? The best example of that is the sewer system. In 1984, before all of us were born, they, they issued -- In 1984, before all of us were born, they issued, we went to the voters, and they issued a $3 billion bond. And that bond has been going since 1984, and we've repaired the sewers as needed. So, today, the sewers that you have as part of your home and part of the street system underneath the streets was issued and paid for over time because over time, it's being used. So, the theory to investors is, you know, today, you're issuing, but they last more than just a year. So, you issue debt so that the generation today isn't necessarily paying, just being the one paying for it. So, that's the advantage of issuing debt for something like a street because you're on it today, but in 20 years, that street will still exist, and your children or grandchildren will be using that street too. So, everybody, in fact, will be paying for that street. Why property owners? Because that's the way the bond is set up. You know, I've been asked before, well, why can't we just issue a tax? And, you know, everybody would pay for it, you know, not just the property owners. We've looked at it, and we've looked across the board of what can be used. It's very difficult in California to do a tax now after Prop 13 and Prop 218 and all the propositions the voters have voted for. It's very difficult for the city to do a tax on purpose. I mean, California doesn't want to be taxed. Californians don't want to be taxed. So, you know, we've been asked, what about a sales tax? Well, a sales tax is expensive, right? For every, I think, half percent of sales tax that you would be charged, we raise $220 million. Well, that, based on the program that we have, that wouldn't be enough to do the program over 10 years. So, that's basically.
Thank you. We had a meeting in the Valley, a special public works committee meeting in the Valley, very similar to what we have before you. And one of the neighborhood council members asked, why can't we use local vehicle registration fee to help pay for this bond? Is that feasible? Have we looked into that?
Yes, sir. Actually, we provided the committee a memo on this. AB 83 Hancock was enacted in 2009, which authorized counties to levy up to $10 for registered vehicle a fee, and would be subject to voter approval to fund a variety of transportation projects and programs. In 2010, five Bay Area counties approved a $10 registration fee for a range of transportation programs ranging from local street repair to county transportation projects to even hiking trails in some of their parks. Each of the ballot measures had a specific expenditure plan, which was part of the ballot measure voted upon. The Los Angeles Board of Supervisors has really shown no interest in placing a vehicle registration fee on the ballot. In the absence of a ballot proposal containing the proposed allocation formula, it's really impossible to estimate the funds that could be derived from such a fee and be available for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, sir. Natalie, you had an answer for this. Have we seen any other cities across the country do have a similar program?
The city of San Francisco was really the first to, in California, to issue general obligation bonds for streets. Now, you have to understand that San Francisco is this big, and we're this big. I mean, we're 470 square miles. We are, by territory, the largest city in the country. And I think that the representative from the Bureau of Street Services talked about that. So, San Francisco issued, but they issued a much smaller bond, and they were able to repair their streets. We have, you know, we go all the way from, you know, Cascades up in the north, all the way down to San Pedro. We have a very large city. So, it takes a lot of money to repair its failed streets.
Thank you. We also, I believe Paul alluded to this, that when a voter-approved bond, you have a citizen oversight committee. Are we looking at the same if voters approve this, a same structure as well?
Yes. I mean, the last two, I believe the last three bond issues that we did, Prop was the most recent one we did, that was for the, thank you, Clean Water, for the drains that go to the ocean. And that one has an administrative oversight committee and a citizen oversight committee. And that citizen oversight committee makes recommendations on what, you know, what projects should be done, how we're spending our money. So, it's not just a rubber stamp. They actually, because I've been in front of that committee, they actually, you know, grill staff on what are we using the money for, how are you spending it, are you making sure it's the most effective and efficient way of spending the money? So, there is a citizen oversight committee that's taken very seriously by the city.
Go ahead, David.
Councilmember, Proposition 0, actually, I live that day-to-day, that we staff that effort out of our group. And the citizens oversight committee meets monthly, and they are very active in overseeing the use of the funds, the science and technology behind it, the budget. We deal with them almost on a weekly basis. And they don't always go along with what staff recommends. They have their own mind, and they have their own opinions, and we respect their opinions. They are, they're not, they're not a shell of an operation. They are very important to the operation.
Who makes this election to sit on the oversight committee? Because I'm going to push for to have some proper representation from South Los Angeles.
Currently, it's the council president and the mayor. They select the different members of the COAC, as you call them. There are nine members.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, you can change the way those are appointed based on how you write the ballot measure.
Okay. We've also heard since we've launched this idea in early January that, you know, we're getting taxed here, getting taxed there. Is our existing budget, or can our existing budget possibly repair failed streets using funds in our existing budget today?
No.
No, our existing budget is not large enough to deal with the Ds and Fs.
Especially when 70% of the budget goes to public safety.
So, okay, so you'd have to cut extreme, you have to cut police and fire extremely to make up, even then, do we?
Yeah, the police budget itself is over a billion dollars.
Still.
So, you know.
Also, we've, the reports that we've reviewed in moving forward have indicated that if the voters approve this bond measure, we're looking at creating 30,000 private sector jobs because our current city workforce won't be able to handle this huge undertaking of fixing nearly 9,000 street miles. How can we, in light of my district, I'm looking at Watts specifically and other parts of South Los Angeles where there's some high unemployment rate, how can we ensure that when these jobs are created, that a majority of the jobs, it's not majority, but some of the jobs are given to our own residents in the city of Los Angeles?
The contracting procedures for all city projects include a local, it's called local hiring.
Local hire.
Local hiring, labor agreements.
Project labor agreement.
Project labor agreements, but also, there's also a local business and local hiring that we can do for construction projects. We do that for very large construction projects like when we built the new police building or at the airport. You know, the contracts go out, and the contractors have to, you know, certify that they're going to hire, you know, X percent from the area. So, there is that provision already in city law that would apply to the general obligation bond program.
Very good. Anything else you want to add in closing? Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate the comprehensive report. Now, it's time to move forward to take public comment, and this is exactly why we decided to take this special public works committee on the road. When my colleague, Councilmember Engler and I proposed this in early January, we heard from everyone that this is a great idea, but we need to learn more. And we, in a time where we just cannot, we be transparent in such a huge undertaking of a $3 billion bond, it was our commitment to do this in a transparent way. So, please be sure to fill out a public comment card at this time and get it over to Officer Johnson. I'd appreciate that. Each member of the community will be allowed two minutes to give a public comment. This is not a Q and A section, a question and answer. We are taking your comments, suggestions seriously as we've, we're putting all these comments in what we call a Dropbox, all digital electronically. And what, and I'll say this in closing, what we, we have a $3 billion problem in the city of Los Angeles. Everything's on the table moving forward, but what we can't do is just sit on our hands and do nothing. So, with that, again, it's great to see so many community members here. Very refreshing. I think this is one of the largest turnouts we've had. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's bring up Karen Lawrence, followed by Malcolm Carson, and Malcolm, after Malcolm will be Alec Bartosoff. So, please, if the names I call, please come to the podium. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Buscaino.
Yes.
I got it right?
Nailed it.
I've been working on that with David.
Solid, okay, good.
Yeah, so tell her I did good.
Yes, ma'am, will do.
Okay, and I just wanted to say, most of mine is basically questions. I mean, I see you said you don't want to answer, or I don't know how you want to approach it, but after we just heard the information given, my question is that this-
Yeah, all questions will be documented, so absolutely.
Okay, this bond, you said, is a $3 billion bond, and where I am hesitant, you're going to use a micropaver system to figure out which streets need to be fixed, and these are rated D and F streets, and you're considering residential and main streets? Is that true?
Right, right.
Now, if you, a lot of times, we pay into the system, but we get, we don't get the streets that we need repaired in our area. So, how can we know what the streets that we are concerned with are rated D and F? Can I go online? Can you guys give us a report? Or can we give you the streets that we feel are really bad streets? Like, if you would like to go home down Normandy.
Right.
Excuse me, Vermont. And especially if you go right, if you go toward Gage.
Right.
It is terrible.
Mr. Olive?
It is terrible. It can cause your car axis to just go, you know, off the kilter. So, these streets, there's a lot of streets in our area that are probably Ds and Fs. And as you guys had said earlier, Mr. Olive, you know, you don't really consider those in the general fund. You're trying to maintain A, Bs, and Cs. So, guess what happens to the Ds and Fs? They get worse and worse and worse, and we pay into the system, and they're still not fixed. So, we want to make sure if this does go through, our streets are on the list, and the micropaver system has earmarked our streets for repair.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, that's just my question, and thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. So, I know we have a website that has all the streets listed, if you can address that, Mr. Olive?
The, there is a website for this proposed bond. I'm sorry, I don't know that offhand, but on the Bureau of Street Services website, bss.lacity.org, when you go to our homepage, there's actually a link for neighborhood councils. When you hit that link, there's actually, it takes you to, one of the options is street assessment maps. Every neighborhood council in the city, I think there might be a couple of exceptions that aren't on there yet, you will see maps with all the streets within the neighborhood council, and they're either going to be red, yellow, or green. The greens are As, Bs, the yellows are Cs and high Ds. Some of the yellows are going to be in the near field category. So, look at the reds and the yellows. Those are the ones we're going to be targeting.
With this bond?
With this bond, correct.
Okay. I need to get your card again, Mr. Olive. So, if I have questions, once I look at that, maybe you can answer them for me?
Absolutely, anytime.
And also, a point of privilege, this problem came before the city 10 years ago, and when they identified this problem, it was at a price tag of $1.5 billion. It's now doubled.
Yeah.
So, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to become. Thank you, ma'am. Malcolm Carson, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Councilman Buscaino. I apologize in advance, I'm not real familiar with this bond yet, and I think it's a great idea in general to put together a bond measure that would address our deferred maintenance on our street system. There's a couple of things I just want to kind of put on the table, though, and I think some other people will as well, but, you know, we're also in a period of time in the city where we're rethinking how streets need to work, and that they need to work not so much for the through traffic, but also for the people that live there, and for pedestrians and bicycles, and to look at them as our kind of community living rooms in a way. And so, I think it's in the process of putting together, if we're going to spend $3 billion, that would be an amazing, once in a, you know, century opportunity for us to, at the same time that we're upgrading the issues on repairs and maintenance and all of that, we're actually changing the nature of our streets so that they're calmer, they're safer, they're more conducive to walking and biking and for people to congregate and, you know, places to sit and wait for the bus or whatever the case may be. So, I think we, hopefully, we'll incorporate all of that. I know you've heard some of that before, and hopefully, we'll continue that conversation, but I strongly urge that we put all of that front and center in the discussion about, you know, how we go about this, and if it means, you know, also bringing that into the priority mix of, in terms of which projects go forward and, you know, at which times and stuff like that. I think that's also something that should be considered. But in general, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Alec, welcome. I think I butchered your last name. Can you correct it for me?
You did fine. It's Alec Bartosoff.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So, my name is Alec Bartosoff. I'm the Campaign and Policy Manager for the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition. I'm here today because I work with a lot of the community groups here in South L.A., and I just wanted to make sure that some of their concerns are raised here. So, the reason that we're here today is we have concerns about the $3 billion bond being dedicated just for repaving on the streets. As the previous speaker said, there are a lot of people that are now ditching their cars or either don't have cars currently and are considering other modes of transportation, mainly walking and bicycling. So, currently, the city is being sued because they're not being ADA compliant with their sidewalks. There's a $1 billion backlog to repair the sidewalks on the streets, and I think it's particularly important for this community that has relatively low car ownership rates in the households to make sure that those amenities are accommodated for, particularly in a bond like this, that, like we've said before, that is, you know, once in a lifetime. So, we think that if this bond is to move forward, that we do include amenities and improvements for bicyclists and pedestrians, and that's, I'll sum it up with that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next three speakers, please come forward. Evelyn Brummel, Romel Malvo, and Neordros Brijortis from the Harvard Gateway North Neighborhood Council. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Your name, please, for the record?
My name is Evelyn Brummel.
Thank you.
Thank you. My comment and concern is, at one time, you used cement to fix the streets, and now it's asphalt, which doesn't last that long. And in the long run, to me, it would be less costly, more costly effective if you used cement rather than the asphalt, which the cement lasts much longer for years, and you won't have to, you know, we won't have to fix the streets as often as you do now. And also, when, I've noticed that when you do repair streets, it's only the little pothole, and it's rather than extend it a little further where there is a problem. But my main concern is, why don't you use cement rather than asphalt?
Thank you, ma'am.
Which will last much longer.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker?
Good evening, Romel Malvo, and I too, thank you for bringing your hearing to our community. It makes it a lot easier for us to become engaged.
Yes.
The concept of repairing the streets is long overdue, and I don't think you'll find very many people who'll be against that. My major concern is the method of payment and the fact that the burden falls on the property owner totally. The concern that I have is imagine a person who lives on a cul-de-sac, and the only people who pretty much use the area are the people in the cul-de-sac. Then imagine a person who lives on a residential street that's become a thoroughfare to get to another major street, and maybe a thoroughfare that is bringing, connecting Culver City to downtown, or- to downtown, or Inglewood to West L.A. The street is being torn up, it's being used not just by the residents of those streets, but by all the people who come in, use our services, take our benefits, and go to their own communities, and, and support that tax base. So I have concerns about the fact that the homeowner is made to shelter, to, to have that burden of payment. The other concern that I have is, there seems to be a certain piecemeal approach to the problems of the city. Yes, potholes in the streets are, are important, and we need to deal with it, but I'm also wondering, how are we going to deal with the sidewalks? How are we going to deal with the trees? Is that another bond issue down the road? And in terms of these infrastructure issues, I don't see a comprehensive plan that says, this is how we're going to tackle it, and you, the, the taxpayer, is, this is what you can expect down the line. I'd have a lot more confidence, I think, in the, in the model, if I had a better feel for how our problems in totality are going to get fixed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for being here. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Neodrus Briggforth. That last name is Briggforth.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, go forth over the bridge. The thing I would, one of the things I wanted to ask is, is there any possibility ever of the large trucks that run down the streets and tear them up? Is there any possibility of taxing the trucks, or the companies that own the trucks that come into our area and tear up our streets? That's just a question, has nothing to do with the bond issue. What, what does the bond issue, what possibilities of the bond issue passing? That's a question I want to know, because, you know, people have a way of not wanting to pay taxes, or not, not, not pass, passing these bond issues, and if the bond issue doesn't pass, where do we go from there?
Hmm, yeah, good question.
That's a question I'd like to know. And I, I'm very concerned also about the sidewalks, and also about the, that, that stuff that they put in the holes, when there's a hole, they put that dark stuff in there that just breaks up, asphalt.
It doesn't.
Yeah, it just, it just gets wet, and then it just comes up, and you, your car goes over it, and it's bumped. You're afraid there's another tire going. So those are the things I, I really wonder about.
Thank you, Ms. Briggforth, thank you for your service to the Neighborhood Council as well. It's great to see some of my constituents here. Next, Susan Burton, please come forward. Shuntain Thomas, and Joyce Fentroy, welcome.
Thank you for holding this meeting. My name is Susan Burton, and I'm a native of Los Angeles. And, you know, I have, I'm going to thank the speakers before me, because my concerns are similar, you know, additional taxes, a taxes, and piecemeal, street repairs, the street repairs, when, when, when a street is repaired in this community, it usually ends up worse than it was before the repair. That's been my experience, and, and seems though, South Los Angeles is the furthest down on the totem pole to receive the services, the repairs, the sidewalks, the attention that we need in this community, just as much as any, any community. And it was asked earlier, you know, I would like to see, and I would like to know, and I'm going to go on the website and look, to see, you know, what is the grade of the streets in this community? And I, and you know, I kind of would think that it's probably an F. But also, I'd like to ask you, where are our local representatives tonight, from our community, that we voted in to be here to talk and hear about this issue? Where is DeMarque Lee Thomas? Where is Karen Price? Where is Jan Perry? Where is our local representatives to come and talk about this issue tonight?
Yeah, this is, they don't sit on the committee, but, and that's why we took it upon myself to bring forth, bring the committee to the people on, because this is a citywide bond measure, and that's the, the information we got from the community, is we just needed to know more information. So even though they don't sit on this committee, I, I don't know what their calendars are like, I don't control where they're at tonight-
They're not invited.
So, they, everyone's aware of it, yeah. This was, this was actually the direction we got from my colleagues, from Council President Wesson, from the entire body of the city council, is they too said, this sounds great, let's, let's educate the community more. Thank you, ma'am. Next, please identify, identify yourself, please, for the record.
Hi, how's, how are you doing this evening? My name is Shuntain Thomas.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, good to see you again. I'm actually, I'm here representing tonight, South L.A., and what I do here, I put on a community event called the South L.A.'s Peace, Love, and Family Bicycle Tour. And we actually do 10 miles up Vermont. Our streets are really at a grade D and F here in South L.A. So I would hope, once this bond is passed, that you consider our South L.A. streets, not because we're at the low grade, but because there are more pedestrians riding our streets today than there are cars in the South L.A. area. So I would like for you to consider paving our streets as one of our, as an option. And then the other thing is, could you tell me, when I'm putting together events, and I have to have a million dollar bond, or a million dollar insurance policy-
Insurance.
-that has to cover the people that are in my event? There are liabilities on my end, but just to word of advice, there's liability on the city also, okay? So I want you to take a look at that, and think about when we're doing these events, if you can help us out with paving the streets as we're going through these events, because it makes a big difference-
Thank you, sir.
...on our liability.
Thank you, sir. You know, and just a point of clarification, and this is, I think the third time it's been raised, can you explain to us, reconstructing a street, does that also include redesigning, traffic calming, and adding traffic calming measures, looking at each of the intersections, also curb gutters and all that?
Not for the Bureau of Street Services. Our, our resurfacing program that's been described tonight is really looking at normally between the curbs, the asphalt between the curbs. And it's really, reconstruction, again, is removing, is when we get that heavy alligator cracking, or you get too many holes to, to deal with one at a time. It all has to be removed, including the, the base material, the crushed rock material that supports that street, that all has to be removed and replaced, rebuilt, if you will. That's reconstruction. But normally, our resurfacing work, the grind and pave operation, is strictly the asphalt work.
So you, you bring in the Department of Transportation, you also bring in Bureau of Engineering, as far as adding, like, right turn pockets?
No, well, what Mr. Toronto had talked about, the supporting cost from our other partners, the 130 million, the extra 30%, if you will, that, that really covers, Department of Transportation does all the striping work. So if they actually have a major street that we're resurfacing, we'll coordinate with them if they have a bike lane project planned, or if they have to reconfigure the striping at that left turn pocket, they would do it at that time, after we resurface the street. The Bureau of Engineering really is involved for survey monument preservation, so if the resurfacing work is going to remove survey monuments, or if we actually need their support to, you know, shoot some grades to make sure the water's going to flow after we're done, and, and we don't cause more problems than what there were before, we get their support there. General Services is going to support us with, the fleet maintenance to make sure we have, our equipment is working, but also there's another arm that, of material testing. All of the streets that are resurfaced, reconstructed in the city, we have field technicians from General Services there that do everything from making sure the, the asphalt that reaches the, the job site passes all the, the standard tests. Once it's placed, we meet all the compaction and all the density tests that are required. So every single street is made, you know, the quality assurance, quality control is, 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 again, done very thoroughly on every street that we do.
Thank you for that question.
So that's the additional work. But the traffic calming, the additional capital improvements, if you will, those are not included in our program.
Thank you for your patience, Joyce. It decided to just be appropriate, since we've, it's been raised a few times. Thank you so much. Joyce, your last name, please?
Fentroy.
Fentroy, thank you for being here.
Thank you for this opportunity. I echo all of the questions that have been asked before, but I heard that there's a citizen oversight committee-
Yes.
...to deal with how the money is spent. So should this bond pass, would there be an oversight committee to monitor the hiring practice, to ensure that all qualified ethnicities in South L.A. will also be offered the opportunity to work?
And maybe Natalie can chime in, or David. And that's all part of the project labor agreement that's been, been approved by Bureau of Public Works, that, I don't know if you want to chime in on it, but that's absolutely, that's why we have the project labor agreement, to have a diversified workforce, and make sure, that will also ensure that we hire our own within the city.
And I understand that part, although it's in place, it's not always enforced. So that's my concern, because, you know, they will, the oversight committee will not make sure that all ethnicities are offered that position.
So in Propo, how are you doing with the Propo, David?
Yeah, the commission members themselves set their agenda pretty liberally, and they determine what they want to see, what kinds of things that they want to have before them. Staff will make some suggestions, but they pretty much tell us what they want, and we try and give it to them. So if the commission members overseeing this bond chose to have that kind of information come before them for their review, then we could definitely provide that, and you could definitely participate in the process, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, also, Board President, Capri Maddox would like to chime in on that as well.
Thank you, so much, Councilman. I, I definitely think that's a great question, so thank, thank you so much for asking that, Ms. Fentroy. Just wanted to let you know that we have the Bureau of Contract Administration that oversees all, all of the propositions and all of the, the work that's done by the Board of Public Works, and we do get reports on projects, and when contractors come before us, we actually look at the subs that they use, the subcontractors. In addition to that, we have the project labor agreements that Commissioner Nutter, who's our, our labor commissioner, that helps us a great deal, he actually works with the community on making sure that all people from all ethnicities are represented. However, I would like to add one thing, is that he's actually actively recruiting members from the USC Chip Murray Facility for a number of our projects. So there's a number of representation from this community in our city projects, they were doing for the Board of Public Works. So thank you for that question.
Great. Our next three speakers, Dorothy Napoleon, Kokai, Kokai, and Esther Montiel, sorry, Esther Montiel.
Thank you so much.
My name is Dorothy Napoleon, and I'm with the Southwest Neighborhood Council. My question is, what are you doing about the alleys? I bought a home, and just so happened, it was in the back of an alley, and the alley needs to be resurfaced. What it is, part of the alley has a drain, that when it rains, the water drains down the other part of the alley, and tears up that asphalt that you put down, and all it is, is just little rocks and so forth. I've been in my home for over 40 years, and nothing has been done to the alley. So I want to know, what is going to be done to the alleys?
You want to address that as part of the, is the general, is this general obligation bond include alleys? I, I know we don't have an inventory, and, and, you know, an alley can address it as well.
It's, it's my understanding that the proposed bond would not cover alleys. That, that's my understanding.
And the reason for that?
Again, it's kind of the, the philosophy of the pavement preservation program in general, that we really, there's not enough funding to cover all of the street needs. The alleys, we, we do have, the last couple of years, we've had $2 million a year to address alleys, but that doesn't go very far at all, because as you say, most of the alleys that, that require attention have to be reconstructed, and those can cost more than a street reconstruction project because of the drainage challenge that you mentioned. But we do do our best through the year to do as much pothole repair, the interim work as we can. A lot of, again, in Street Services, what we've lost over the last five years with a lot of the budget cuts, a lot of the staffing cuts, we don't have the ability to proactively look at, look at all the alleys and find out where all the problems are in the sidewalk repairs. We really rely on, you know, the homeowners and the residents to report to us where the needs are. We encourage calling 311, emailing us, letting us know where these problems are, and, and I assure you that we do go out and inspect once we are made aware, and we do the best we can to put our fingers in the dike, if you will, and, and, and maintain those alleys the best we can. But again, with $2 million a year, it, it, it's really about two tenths of a mile per council district that we're able to resurface or reconstruct with that funding. But again, I think the thinking is, to answer the question directly, is there are more, there's a lot more use of, you know, the major streets and the residential streets than there are of the alleys. Not saying the alleys aren't important, but if we're going to focus the money on the highest priority needs, the alley unfortunately is going to fall below the other, the other needs.
And I can also address that as a council member, and represent the 15th District, you know, one of the, the main issues aside from streets are alleys as well, and trying to identify additional funding sources, funding revenues as well, is, is important to me and my community. Just recently, I presented a motion yesterday in city council with the trash franchise, looking at identifying some funds from that franchise, specifically from the heavy duty trucks that are going in and out of our alleys, and I know someone mentioned about the, the trucks, and we're moving on that. I proposed the, the motion and asking the committee to look into that and weigh in on it.
I just have another question. I just want to add something. The alley is, is a way to get to your garage, the alley is for the use of the trash people that go through the, the alley. So, I, like I said, I've been there over 40 years, and I think 40 years, it should have been something done to the alley. I've been reporting it, I took pictures. If you would like to see my pictures, I brought pictures today.
If you, if you can hand them over to Dennis, and we'll, we'll, we'll work with your council member.
Thank you.
Dennis is right here, ma'am. Thank you. Kokai?
Yes.
Thank you so much for being here, sir.
Thank you, Councilman, and my name is Kokai Kwajidahidi. I'm planning land use chair for the Empowerment Congress Southwest Neighborhood Council, which you're in right now. Welcome. Also, the Chair of the South L.A. Power Coalition, which is a coalition of grassroots organizations throughout South Los Angeles. A couple issues, and then I want to throw out some questions. Councilman Buscagino, I really appreciate the work that you've done on the council since you were, you got elected, I was somewhat involved in that-
Thank you.
-volunteering. I would really hope that we stop into the city of Los Angeles talking about isolated issues. Inevitably, when you talk about street repair, particularly in South L.A., and I guarantee you in the Harbor Gateway, and Watts, in your district, inevitably, we're going to talk about street lighting, inevitably, we're going to talk about sidewalks. And so I think that there's a greater opportunity to not just talk about sidewalks, but talk about this bond in a context of greater public work services. And how can we leverage the conversation around facade improvement, lighting improvements, and these kind of things, and have this as just a part of the conversation? I would have loved to have been able to race from my job downtown and come down, and not just talk about the street pavement, but talk about how we can reimagine our street lighting, how we can reimagine our facade repair, and those kind of things that Public Works works on. So I just want to be able to just throw a friendly challenge to you-
Good.
...to be able to raise the conversation. Another thing I wanted to throw out, I think that our neighborhood council, because a lot of our homes, the entrance way is alleys, I would be safe to say that that's a big issue for us, and in South L.A. that's a big issue for us and in South LA. So I want to reinforce what, uh, our treasurer, Mr. Napoleon said. And then the other thing I, I just want to throw out, uh, I know in public government, it's easy to do, you know, divide by five on, on the county board of supervisors or divide by 15, uh, on the city council, and I understand the importance and the political ramifications of that. But I would really say that not all streets and not all communities are equal. Instead of doing equal, can we have the guts to actually do equity-based funding for street repair? Thank you.
Thank you sir. Um, I think our final speaker is Lonella?
Esther Montai?
I'm sorry. I have your card. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Esther, I called you up. Esther, thank you for being here.
Well, uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, I think the community is really pleased with you coming and bringing this to the community because some, most of the times we're like overlooked and we appreciate you taking out the time to, to come out and hear our problems. Because, uh, most of the time, uh, we're like overlooked here. Uh, and I've been in the community for over 50 years and I've seen it going down or whatever's going up, but, uh, we have very little improvement here. I don't know where, why, but, uh, it seemed like we're overlooked most of the time because we need someone that's speaking for us. Our council people are speaking for us. That way, I think we could move forward a little bit. And, uh, I'm for the improvement of the street, but the whole thing is, will we get this? Will it come to us? Will we see it? Uh, like I said, I've been here for over 50 years. When I first moved, my street was concrete and they came and they, uh, put the asphalt. Once they put the asphalt, they covered up the gutters. Now, when it rains or anything, the water sits in front of my house because it don't drain off anymore. Because, and I complain about it and it says, no, there was no, uh, concrete gutter, but it was. I, I was there when I would see it, but now it's just the water sits in front of my house. So I'm wondering, and like one, uh, speaker said, that if we would concrete it, I know it would be more expensive, but I think it would cut down on coming back repairing it over and over and over again. So those are the things that we would like for you to consider and maybe we could get some improvement in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am. If you can give Dennis your address as well, on the gutter's a big issue, we, last thing we, we want is a flooding, especially after a huge torrential downpour. So if you can just give Dennis your home address. And our last speaker is Lonella?
That'll do.
How are you? I'm used to people messing up my name, my apologies.
I'm glad we have something in common. Lonella Enix, I'm the Chair of the Empowerment Congress Southwest Area Neighborhood Development Council.
Thank you for being here.
And just very quickly, I did pull up the website really quickly and since I will have to go back and report to my stakeholders, um, there aren't any street maps for the empowerment congresses, north, central, southwest or southeast, so online. Um, there is one for Watts and Can Do and other places. So I'm just wondering, does that mean we haven't been graded yet or what's the?
No, I'm sure that's not the case. Um, again, we've heard about one at a time that are missing, so I'll be happy to give you the information. Um, you know, I, I know we have the maps, I don't know why they're not uploaded yet, but I can give you my card and we can touch base and we'll give you the information.
And I will gladly take it.
Thank you, Ms. Roloff. Okay, um, last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I, I'm just excited. I'm, uh, I'm inspired by, uh, the amount of, of people from the South Los Angeles area who've been here. We have one more public comment, sir?
Yes.
Did you fill out a card? I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I just want to say, like she just said.
Okay, we'll get your card afterwards. Go ahead sir.
Okay, go ahead.
If you can just give them two minutes? Thank you, Michael. Welcome. Your name for the record, sir?
Uh, my name is Percy P. Simmons.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I just, uh, like she was saying earlier, been in the community for, uh, over 55 years and I've been on 91st Street for over 50 years. And, uh, it seemed like to me, uh, that part from, let's say from St. Pedro to Broadway to 92nd to Manchester and on up, uh, it's, it's like a forgotten community. They don't do anything. They're, like she said, they're come, there's trees, there's growing and have buckled the sidewalk and they're coming put asphalt over the cement, but the sidewalk's all busted up. And the other house on the corner walls in 91st, when it rains, the water sets for four or five days. It just has to sink into the earth. So we don't get anything done. And, and sometime when you go to different little cities like Lakewood or Long Beach and come back, you know the minute you get off the freeway on M. Period that you're in LA because your car going bumpity bump. It's just a different. I, I'm just saying that we need to take a look, when I've been walking from, from 010 up until now, six days a week, and my wife back there, I have a bad back, we do it every day. And I see people sleeping on the street from Broadway to Main to St. Pedro, because we walk from 91st Street to Manchester, back to Main, every day except Sunday. And we really need to get leaders that's concerned about our community because we pay taxes and we are here and I will be here. So all I want to do is just see an improvement in the community with great leaders like you guys.
Thank you sir. Thank you so much. Um, as I was saying, um, I just want to thank you, the community of South Los Angeles for having a vested interest in improving the quality of life in our city of Los Angeles. I'm inspired. Uh, it's, it's great to see, uh, so many of you engaged in this important, critical issue of this $3 billion problem of fixing every failed street in the city of Los Angeles and most importantly, making every effort to put 30,000 people back to work. I thank you again, um, I commend you. Everything that you've said is on record and we will, uh, take all, and we'll continue to take your comments, your suggestions, your concerns, um, obviously in public and it's now on record as we move forward in the process. Um, as we know, we have a lot, this is the first step, there's a lot more to do moving forward, um, before we have the final, or before we make a final proposal to our colleagues in city council and then to you, the voters. With that, um, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to hold both items in committee and continue, uh, this, um, these two items until next week, Tuesday, April 30th, as we will be in East Los Angeles. I want to thank CLA's office, CAO's office, ITA, our Sergeant of Arms, the entire city family. Madam President, Capri Maddox from the Board of Public Works Commission, thank you so much ma'am for being here. With that, have a blessed evening and thank you so much for being here.